Okay, George, I think we're all, everybody's in from the waiting room.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 28, 2022 North Hampton Planning Board Meeting. There's one large agenda item, an application by Cousins Investments that we'll be dealing with later on. And then we have some more bureaucratic things towards the end of the meeting. But before we open up the hearing for Cousins Investments, we do spare some time for any public comment that does not have to do with the agenda items today. So if anyone would like to make a comment to the planning board about other issues in the city, please raise your hand or use that react that the raise hand feature on the toolbar.
I don't see any hands.
Okay, so hearing none, we'll move right into our first item of business, which is a special permit by Cousins Investments LLC for a new car dealership at 48 Damon Road, MAP ID 18B-34. Carolyn, before we have the presentation by the applicant and their parties, could you just give us a little background on the previous special permit hearing that we held two years ago?
Sure, so this project, car sales require a special permit in the general business district. So this property is in the general business district. I'm sure the applicant's going to also go over sort of what's changed between two years ago and now. But just briefly, they, at the time, two years ago, there was a timing issue for the applicant not needing to move into the space quickly, but not having fully fledged plans about what the build out of the site was going to be. So the planning board granted a special permit, but gave a two-year window, I believe it was two years, in which the, so it would become null and void at the end of that window. So they need to reapply. And the idea was that at that point, they would have more concepts, more than just a concept of how they want to build out. And so that's why they're back here, but it's a brand-new permit. So if members of the planning board were not present at the last one, that doesn't matter. This is newly advertised, newly noticed to the butters. And so it's a brand-new permit, special permit requires a vote of five positive as a special permit. So that's a super majority vote of the planning board.
Great, and we're all familiar that at this location, there's a lot of roadwork going on by the Mass DOT, so which has created also some, some little wrinkles in the applications. And then during the past two years, the alignment of the roads and also. So, okay, why don't we move on to the applicant representatives for presentation?
Very good. My name is Kimberly Maslowick, and I'm an engineer with BL Companies. And I have Tommy Kuzenzi here with me tonight on behalf of the applicant Cousins Investments. So Carolyn nailed it with what she said pretty much. When we were back here in 2020, there was a lot of things up in the air, and they weren't sure what they were going to do. This was the old K Lane building for the body shop on 32. And then Bo Max was leasing the facility on 48 Damon Road, which previously Carla and Tommy Kuzenzi had used for Volkswagen before they built their new dealerships around the corner on King Street. And when they went to reoccupy it, as Carolyn mentioned, there was a, you know, we realized they needed a special use permit, even though historically it had been operated like that. I just think the paperwork, you know, we needed to catch up with that. So we did that, and it does, in fact, expire in August. So that's one of the reasons why we're here. And of course, they have a much better handle on what's going on. So you probably have driven by there many times already and can see DOT has actively been working there. It's our understanding that hopefully they'll be done in the fall. And we've had several discussions with them with regards to kind of merging these two plans. So I can talk about that a little bit more when I go through the plans with you. And then also, you know, Tommy Car Collision Center actually took over where it used to be K Lane. So they're currently operating on the 32 Damon Road lot. These are both, these two lots are in common ownership, and they share parking and display for the Volvo dealership as well. So, and Volvo wants to do renovations, really the extent is more related to the building, the interior and the facade, kind of upgrading that to their image program. So Carolyn, can I share here? Yes, okay, so I'm going to try and do this. Oops, all right, can you see my screen or are you?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay, very good. Okay, so let me actually, so this is just the existing conditions plan. And Damon Road runs horizontally across here, Industrial Drive is across the street. This is the Volvo dealership here, and this is Tommy Car Collision. And on this plan, I'm actually gonna zoom in a little bit here. You can see that there's really, there were two curb cuts along this road. And one of the concerns and things that the planning board wanted to see last time was having this closed off. And this is all paved right here, so you can drive all the way around this. And they wanted to see this closed off as well and made more like a, you know, a gathering place, something with a little more curb appeal. And over here, Mass DOT actually proposed a widening. So while the property line remained the same, they have an easement to do a widening in this area. That's, that's reflected on our plans as we move forward here, so. Actually, gonna go to the layout. All right, so basically, this limit of disturbance line right here is really the back of sidewalk that's going in with Mass, with the roadwork here. And this is one of their dashed easement lines that they have. Basically, on the back of this sidewalk, they had proposed just a few changes from the DOT plan. We've been working with them on several things, because when these plans went through, there were some things that kind of got overlooked that really needed to be addressed in order to keep the dealership functioning and also to meet the requirements you all had as, as in our last special permit. So like closing this part here, we've already talked to DOT, and they're doing that as a field change. This driveway, they originally had shrunk it down to 24, but then a car carrier can't get onto this site and do their turning movements on-site. So we requested that they widen that, and they worked with us on that one. And then over here, there was a retaining wall proposed, but because of the green space requirements that we were talking about last time in 2020, although it was really from the property line, which is out here, but the intent is from the sidewalk essentially to have that kind of buffer, the green space. So we're able to grade that out instead of having a retaining wall. So we can grade it out and landscape it, and that's a win-win for everybody. The other thing that kind of came out of this is there were existing light poles along the street roadway here that were owned by DOT and had lights on them for, that were actually serving this parcel. So we do have a few proposed light poles, obviously LED with cutoffs and everything. So that'll actually be an upgrade as well that comes in with this project. And then, of course, this, this front area here and having connectivity, first of all, getting rid of all this paved area and making it a pedestrian plaza instead of, you know, one, one where there may be vehicles. So basically, we've had the concrete sidewalk all the way across the front and connection here to the, the new sidewalks that are all being put in here with bike racks as well. So, and then we have landscaping along here that's in our plan as well. And we just have, so these are linden trees all throughout the front here that we had essentially on our last proposal. So site work really, again, it's minimal. It's just kind of repaint, restriping some of these lines in this area, having the EV charging stations, actually, I didn't point that out, but they're adding a couple of EV charging stations while they're doing this. This, there's a little stair here on this entrance to service department, and that needs to be replaced, so they're doing that. And then there is a step right here, so that will be removed, and it'll be made accessible from, from over here and here. So that building facade, I'm gonna jump to, this probably actually shows it even, let me see. So Google Earth hasn't even been updated from back in the day, but this is when Bo Max had it, and essentially this facade has been the same for eons, it seems. So they're gonna do some, some upgrades here and essentially have, leave the glass where it stands, but then do ACM panels around the front. This EPIS material that they have now, they'll paint all that, clean it up, paint it, the same thing with the block. So they've got, you know, some block along the base. And then this, this does return on the sides of, this is the service side, obviously, and this is kind of the showroom side, that returns, and then it goes back to the service department. Let me just show you on here, so this is all the service bays in the back of the building here. And those, no change proposed, but though, this is masonry block, so they'll paint all that, and that'll be cleaned up around the building. So that, that's the proposal, pretty straightforward. They just wanted, there's really no changes in operation. They want to just continue to operate how they have been in the past and, you know, make these, make these little improvements to kind of coordinate this plan with DOT on this side and have that pedestrian plaza over here right in front of the, the Volvo.
Would you mind spending just a minute on your lighting plan that was included?
Yep. All right, forgot about that. So as I mentioned, there's existing poles along the, the street frontage here that actually point towards their display in this lot over in this area. So we have three of those, three new poles proposed, 16-foot mounting height, LEDs. I think the fixtures were on these wall pack, you know, there's wall packs around the building, but there's no, no spillage anywhere. So that's not an issue. And then we had, yeah, so you can see again, the, the mounting height and the fixtures that were selected for the poles and the wall packs here. Dark Sky compliant LED, yeah, pretty.
Current lights that are up high on the telephone poles, they'll be coming down.
Yes, yeah, they're like stadium lights right now. Yeah, so this will modernize that significantly. Sure.
Any other clarifying questions from the planning board? Well, we could move over to the public then and see if anybody is here who would like to speak in, in favor of the proposal or anybody who has questions or objections. You, maybe we could go back to gallery view just for a minute, Carolyn?
Sure.
We might have to go back and forth. Is there anyone out there who would like to comment on the plans, on the application? I know there aren't a lot of butters in that neighborhood, which helps. All right, well, hearing none, we'll go back to the board. That, that sidewalk is continuous from the railroad tracks across the front of your two lots, all the way to the underpass, I guess, correct?
Yes, that's the DOT sidewalk. And then we have this connection point here, and it connects our internal parking field essentially. Yep.
And I couldn't see the detail, it's too small, but I think marked on your plans is a bike rack or two.
It is, do you want me to share again?
No, as long as it's, it's there.
Yeah, yes, it is, it's right in the front connection where we connect the two, the street walk to the on-site walk, yes.
Anything else, playboard, or I monopolize all our time? No?
Looks pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah.
I moved.
Sorry, Sam, go ahead.
I moved the closed public comment.
I'll let, hold on for a few minutes till we make sure, I still have a couple of questions for the applicant.
Okay.
Um, and, and this is for my own education too. The whole signage situation, Carolyn, is an application or a permit with the building department?
Yes, so signs are dealt with through a sign application. And if they're allowed by right, then they just move forward. If they need additional review, it goes to the zoning board of appeal.
So that's, even the, the placement of that within the, the plan, it's not up to us?
Right, you mean the wall signs and?
No, not the wall signs. So currently, there's a large, it's empty now, but if they put anything near the sidewalk or in the green space?
So there are, right, so a ground sign, they already, there's already one ground sign. You're only allowed one per parcel. So if they want to reuse that, typically what applicants do is just reface it with new panels. If they wanted a new ground sign, they'd have to meet this requirements for, for setbacks. I believe it's 15 feet in this district, I can't remember off the top of my head. So if it meant that they had to adjust or move trees or any other significant portion of the landscaping, then it might trigger review by the planning board, but otherwise it wouldn't.
So does the applicant have a plan for a ground sign? Are they gonna reuse the location that's there?
So we did show, we did show the two signs where we had them proposed. One is a new location, the other one is, I think, essentially the same. But we, we noted on here that it was going to be under a separate permit, just so that it was clear that it wasn't included in this.
Okay, and, and again, I, I'm really sorry, but the plans are difficult for me to see all the fine print. It's not interfering with any of the placement of the trees.
Correct.
Because I know on King Street, we often have a little negotiation with the landowner about the street trees impacting the visual of the sign. I want to make sure we don't run into that five years from now as the trees flesh out.
Okay, yep.
Um, Carolyn, I, I, I thought within our tree guidance, our tree ordinance, we often didn't put the same species, what are there, how many are there, 10, 12 trees along one running line? Is that true? Can, did the tree warden have any look at this plan to say whether all lindens are okay?
No, but again, the tree warden, it doesn't have jurisdiction in the private property. Sometimes the, the tree warden would make a recommendation about the plant, but certainly the planning board could suggest a variety of trees for that purpose to ensure that, you know, if one gets, the purpose of that, of course, is if one species succumbs to infestation or disease, that it won't kill the whole trees, all the trees at once, and that there's some diversity there for that reason. So you could certainly, I mean, the applicant is allowed to pick from all the whole host of street trees. So you could certainly make a condition that there be a variety, a mix so that there isn't, you know, if they're doing 10, that it's not more than two or three of one species, whatever you feel is appropriate.
Would the planning board members be okay with that as a condition? Thank you, all right. There's a lot of talk in our town, and we've received some money to design the new bike trail to go out to Hatfield. But my understanding, Carolyn, is that's on the other side of 91? Have you seen any, that's not along the railroad tracks here, right?
Right, no.
It's on the other side of 91, okay.
Right, and there is no traffic mitigation required, because this is reusing an existing property that previously had the same type of use, so it's not a new impact.
All right. Well, hearing no other questions, we could go back to Sam's suggestion. You still with us, Sam?
Oh, I am, I'm COVID-nosed.
Um, so I just wanted to, I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry, Kim, if I missed this about the landscape treatment along the front, in front of the building and modifications there.
Mm-hmm, so basically, that's all paved area right now, and that'll be removed. You'll have the sidewalk at the street line, it's the DOT. You'll have the sidewalk along the facade, basically, that connects the lots. And then in between, it's just a manicured, maintained land, you know, lawn with those trees.
And as the board note, I noted, I had mentioned in the staff memo that there was an issue about parking in front of the building. There's no parking allowed in this district between the building and the street. So even before the landscaping and the modifications are changed to that area, it's still not allowed to have parking there. And so that has happened in the past couple of years where they've been storing vehicles or allowing vehicles there. So, you know, even before they start construction, that wouldn't be allowed.
Okay, the applicant is on, so they're hearing.
And just to follow up on that, to clarify that rendering that you showed of the updates that are going to be made to the outside of the building did not show that grassy area. I mean, that still showed just a paved.
Yeah, this is, yeah. And this one, it is draft. I just wanted to show this definitely for visual, but that landscaping is not on there, you're correct.
But it, but it will be, that's, that's.
Yes, it will be, yes, yeah. It's this, I, I've just included that other one, so you guys would have a good visual instead of the black and white elevations.
Thank you. So last opportunity before we close the public comment period, is anyone who would like to make a comment regarding the application? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I moved the closed public comment.
A second.
Thanks, Jenna. All right, the motion's been made and seconded, any comments on the motion? All right, hearing none, cause it's Zoom, we'll go through that voice vote. And I'll start with David.
Yep.
And Chris?
Yes.
And Jenna?
Yes.
And Sam?
Yes.
And George, okay, unanimous to close the public comment portion. Well, now it's back to the board, it looks like we just have two conditions at this point. But there is no interaction, Carolyn, with DPW on this, no change in the stormwater plan, nothing of that nature.
They did, did you all see the comments in the file? They did have a few comments, I think, but, I mean, basically this, I'm just gonna pull those up, I'm sorry, here. And I believe, Kim, you saw those, I know public hearing is closed, but I just, maybe you could nod your head. I think we forwarded those on.
I think Tim had those.
Okay. Yeah, let me just see. Sorry. I just want to double-check them before we, but there were not, as far as I recall, the, whoops, wrong one, sorry. Yeah, there were. Here we go. They just were no, they just noticed that they, they wanted clarification about the drive aisle width. And so that there may not be enough space for turning around in the northern, north corner where there are some proposed spaces, but it's, but they had no comments about the stormwater.
Great, thanks. Well, I think there are only two conditions, one being around the trees. And we might, we will ask the applicant to provide a mix of the trees on the plan, not to be all of one species, to no more than three of any one species. I think you can find from our city list, trees that grow to the same height and the same kind of spread that are still attractive along that, that frontage. So there's that condition, and the other one is that there's a, and Carolyn, I don't know if it's in an ordinance or if it's a condition specifically here, that there will be no display, no vehicle parking in the front of the building, between the building and the road.
That is a current, currently a zoning requirement, so it doesn't need to be a condition. I think that it was important to raise that, because that hasn't been complied with recently. So I just, it's sort of duly noted that that's, the zoning requires that, and enforcement could, enforcement action hopefully won't be necessary. It would save everyone time and effort and hassle, they just complied.
And, and we've acknowledged for the minutes that we didn't need a traffic, a full traffic study here, because it's an existing use, really.
Right.
All right, any other conditions that we're missing? So it's really just down to that one around the trees. Okay. All right, if there are no other issues to bring up, certainly entertain a motion. Interacting a motion from the planning board.
I move, we approve the application with the aforementioned tree diversity condition.
What, is there one more?
No, Sam, I think we agreed that the, the bit about parking in front of the building is already in the city ordinance, in the zoning regulations, so we don't need to add that as a condition.
I second.
All right, motion's been made, except the special permit application by Cousins Investment LLC. Been made and seconded, any comments? All right, hearing none, we'll go to that Zoom voice vote, David?
Yep.
And Chris? And Jenna?
Yes.
And Sam?
Yes.
All right, and the chair, George, also votes yes. So that's unanimous, congratulations. Good luck with your.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so. Okay, so.
I just wanted to follow up on this thing about the parking in front, just a clarification. Is that all of the highway, highway business district?
It's not highway business. This is actually not, yeah, this one's general business district, so in all the general business district, yeah.
So, so all those car dealerships on King Street that do have parking in front, that's okay? Because that's highway business, okay?
Yeah.
So that's, that is all.
I actually, I have one more question. So how do we go about, like, what is the mechanism for, you know, if there is a violation of parking in the future? What's? What is that supposed to be?
The path, you mean to rectify that? So anybody can file a complaint with the building department. The building commissioner in Massachusetts is officially the zoning code enforcement officer, so it goes through the building department. They do an inspection. And seek compliance, and if there's unwillingness for compliance, there are other steps that can be taken, fines and so forth. That can be applied for non-compliance.
Yeah, because I keep on wondering this relative to the net, the net of parking or net of police situation, which we they finished, they finished their parking lot. I don't understand why there's still police officers there.
That's different. That's not a zoning thing. That is, yeah, so. It's, they've asked and they're paying the police department.
But we, they said when we okayed their special permit, that that not be the case. So I understand that they want such a thing. But we said, we, when we when we okayed that permit, we said, we we actually said, once this parking is done, there's no, there's no police. And I'm, I'm getting a little tired of, of police presence directly in the beginning of our city.
So I just.
If I remember correctly, it wasn't so much about the extra police, but along Con Street, they have used cones to block off a lot of the on-street parking and some of the travel lane. That's what they asked them to remove.
Okay, well, I understood it as the police that are on whatever that streets are, that I don't understand why they've taken a private street for themselves.
So again, that is actually something that would be appropriate to take up with your city counselor and this councilor's at large. I, because that is not a zoning issue. It was about the cones on Con Street and I, I think that.
I, I'd like someone to go back and clarify that because that was not, at least when I voted on this thing, I did not think of it as cones on, the cones on Con Street. I thought of it as relative to the police in front, where the police presence has always been. And I'd like that to be looked at because it really bothers me that we have a police, we have a private business taking up that is, I don't care if they're paying for it, doesn't matter how, my understanding of it, and I could have been out of it, it's certainly, certainly okay, but it's I, I'd like that to be checked because when I okayed that, my thought was the police on whatever that tiny street is called.
I, I, I agree with Sam's sentiment. I, what I guess I'm hearing is that like, there is not really a zoning remedy here that we should ask city council to address this. And I would sign on to Sam, whatever you, you know, we can talk offline about if we want to, the city councilors ask for some remedy.
I mean, I think, just I would add, Sam, that I think that that was represented as well, sort of their plan and their acknowledgement that they didn't need that traffic control anymore, as they needed it as being, when they were the first operator coming on to the, into the state. And so I think you're right, that I, I think I remember that as well, that there was a conversation that, that, that it was no longer necessary, but as, as David said, it's not within the purview of the zoning or the, the zoning ordinance or the planning board about that piece.
Okay, so we just have to, I mean, listen, I don't, not trying to take away extra dollars for police officers, but this is just needs to end. Just plenty, plenty of potshots. They don't, they don't need, they don't need our police department as their private security system.
I look forward to hearing what you and David find out about a remedy for that private, that public street. All right, let's, we have just now our favorite A and R.
Well, we'll start with the one on the corner of Norwood and Warner. This is, you could, can you all see the screen? Fine. So this is really an instance where there's a piece of property at the back of the parcel that will be transferred from one owner to the other, so this larger parcel A is transferring this rectangle. Parcel B1 to parcel B, so it's not creating a new lot, but it's changing lot boundaries, so I need a vote to have these plans endorsed as not creating a new subdivision.
I move to endorse this A and R. Warner and Norwood have.
My second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is, is that second dwelling there currently?
Yes.
Okay, the motions have been made and seconded. Any comments? All right, we'll go to a voice vote. Why don't we go backwards this time? George votes yes. Sam?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
And David?
Yep.
Congratulations, folks.
All right. Sorry here. Okay. The next one is on Nanatac. And can you see the screen, the new plan set? So there, there are a lot of lines on here, so I'll try to explain it. So Nanatac Street is here. There are, this is taking existing parcels and re, re-dividing the lines. Lot one is an existing house. Lot two is an existing house. What is being proposed is to change the lot boundary for lot one and slide it over here next to this house, so this would be, this would create a reduced lot line parcel, a single-family home. By changing this line, so the plans will need to be stamped to that effect, that it's following those criteria which require, you know, have its own requirements. Lot two is is not, is sort of, is changing by creating this line going down this, what's called a paper street. Formerly it was a, you know, originally was planned as a street. And the frontage is here, over here to the other, so lot two's frontage is here, and then lot three and four are new parcels. Lot three has frontage here in this hatched out area, which is going to be an easement across this existing shared driveway. And lot four is a standalone parcel here that meets the minimum lot size as well. So three and four are newly configured lots with you don't currently have houses, lots one and two are just shifted boundaries and they both have existing houses on them, but they all meet the minimum frontage and anything new that would be constructed would be evaluated at the time of building permits in middle and may or may not trigger planning board review, but you're just looking at the lot boundaries and the frontage is the only thing that you can really evaluate is that these lots have frontage along the public way, Nanatac Street, and that therefore it's not creating a new subdivision.
Carolyn, so we don't care if the setback is non-conforming in lot one? We just care that lot one has frontage?
You, technically you can't you, you have to endorse a plan if it meets the frontage, but you as the planning board or staff or anybody can write all sorts of things on the plans, like this building is non-conforming and requires a variance, or this building has to meet the criteria of reduced lot line. In this case, we do have a provision for reduced side lot line boundaries. So long as there's a total of 20 feet between structures and the shared, with that shared side lot line, so we, we can make those notes on the plan. Sometimes the surveyor makes the notes on the plan, sometimes our office makes the notes on the plan, but the planning board is only evaluating whether the lots shown have adequate frontage.
Okay, and then just, sorry, there's a lot of, a lot of words, a lot of lines. Where's the frontage for lot three?
It's right here, so did you see my arrow? Yeah.
Okay, so lot three has the access easement for lots one and two on it?
Right.
Okay.
But I, lot three is access off the shared driveway. I thought we allowed three houses off a shared driveway.
And we do, but they would need to have a permit to add the third house. They don't, they only have a permit for lot one and two from years ago. So it's in, it would have to come forward before this house can be built. It would need a permit from the planning board in the very least for a shared driveway amendment.
So this way they're avoiding having to come forward for a permit because they have frontage now.
Well, anywhere in the city, if you have frontage, you can create a single-family house lot and not have a, have to go through for permits. So this is just another scenario of a situation where they are creating a lot that would require use of a shared driveway to access. I mean, they could put this, how, do you see my arrow here? They could put the house right here and it would still meet the requirements as long as they met the reduced lot line with a, you know, setback here. And then they wouldn't need a, I mean, the problem is there's already a shared driveway there, so they would, couldn't put the house here unless they created two separate lots, two separate driveway access points, which they could do as well. They could just extinguish all of this shared driveway here, create a new driveway for lot one, a new driveway for lot two, and then this lot three would have its own driveway.
Okay, thank you.
So does the planning board want to put the note about the you know, the 20-foot space between structures or whatever? Can you write that note for us, Carolyn?
Yes, I will. I actually, instead of specifying what the dimension is, I'll say that they must meet all the requirements for the reduced lot line section in this zoning ordinance.
And is there any kind of review for the reduced lot line section?
Yeah, so it really would come into play when lot three comes for development.
I don't, well, I don't understand, honestly, because it's like making the, a non-conforming is making a structure that was conforming now non-conforming.
Well, that's the whole, so when you create a reduced lot line, maybe this will make it a little bit easier to understand, when you, if you want to create a reduced lot line, you have to control ownership of all the land before you create the division, and that's what they're doing on the property. So they're making the determination that they want to create a reduced lot line project. They couldn't do it if they didn't own the other side now.
If they're selling lot three to someone else?
If they sold lot three before they came in for a zone, so what they'll have to do is file a zoning permit application saying we want to do zero, a reduced lot line for these lots, and then, once they do that, we evaluate, and once they do that, then they can then, then it's sort of, it's confirmed and it's, it's been reviewed, and then they can sell off lot three.
It's fine now because it's all common ownership, so that it isn't really five feet to the, to the lot line because they own the other lot.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense to me. So yeah, but if we can make a note about that, that would be I would, I would make a motion to endorse this with that note.
Inter second to the notion.
A second.
All right, any discussion about this A and R or the motion?
Can I say something? I'm, I'm actually the potential homeowner at lot one.
Hold on just a minute, Mr. Claps. So Carolyn, just a note of kind of process. This isn't really a public hearing, the A and Rs. So I think, Mr. Claps, your questions can be asked later on to Carolyn.
Okay.
Okay, if you have some really, she'll, she'd be glad to answer your questions by email or telephone at any point, okay?
Perfect.
Okay, so the motions were made and seconded. We don't have any questions at this point from the board members. We'll go to a roll call real quickly. Jenna?
Yes.
And Sam?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And George, yes. And that was the A and R on Nanatac. And now we have an A and R on Coles Meadow Road, or you pick, Carolyn, whichever next in your queue.
Okay. Okay, so this is Coles Meadow. This is for the purposes of beating open space to the city. So we do, this is the existing parcel on Coles Meadow Road, and there's this new property line in the back, so the back half that covers Broadbrook. This would be part of the Fitzgerald Lake holding. So that's, that's it. No new lots, except just changing this boundary here.
I move to approve the A and R.
Second.
All right, motions made and approved to, to the A and R on Coles Meadow Road. Any questions from the board? Any comment? This is a nice one, fairly straightforward. We'll go through that roll call. David?
Yep.
Sam?
Yep.
Jenna?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And George, yes, unanimous. Hooker Avenue, my neighborhood. Hooker was named after a Civil War general.
Okay, see if I got this.
I wasn't told I'd have to learn something today.
I can't pull up a CAD file, so that's what's happening here, so hold on just a second. Okay. All right. Bear with me, come in. Okay, Hooker.
I guess we missed that storm that was bubbling over our heads. It's gone already. It's been the nature of thunderstorms around here lately.
You didn't get anything?
No.
We got, we got a little rain.
I know it was pouring in my house. Um, sorry, this is taking so long. Some reason, um, oh boy. Okay, um, I'm gonna go to the North Farms Road one instead, because I know I have that one. And I have both of these, but I just need to look somewhere else. So let's do this one. Download. Okay. So this is really, again, a swapping um, land from one parcel to the next to allow for expansion of the property. I'm just gonna have to move this um, plan, go down a little bit. So here's North Farms Road. There's two existing parcels here and there's, see this triangle here where the yellow keeps flashing? Um, right here, the applicant wants to put this addition on in the back. And so they're swapping, they're gonna purchase a triangle here. And then because they're, both these lots are right at their minimum lot size, they're gonna swap the same amount of land in this really skinny triangle along here to the other parcel. So it's just a equal exchange of land area so that this addition can be accomplished.
I move we, uh, endorse the A and R.
Second.
Votions been made and seconded to endorse the A and R on North Farms Road. Good to see neighbors getting along nicely like this. Any comment besides that one?
I'm surprised there are minimum lot areas here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, eh, just under two acre minimum is required.
All right, hearing no questions about this one, we'll go to a roll call. Uh, Jenna?
Yes.
And Sam?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
And George votes yes also.
Okay, so um, this is, I'm gonna be showing you um, something, don't, don't mind the red text. I can't, I've misplaced, I only have the CAD file for some reason in, on my document. So I'm just gonna show you the, what's gonna say preliminary, but it's really um, uh, not preliminary. Um, so here's the end of Hooker Avenue. And um, there's a house here, a house here, and the lot lines um, currently, go see this hatching here, I can zoom in on this piece. Parcel A is going to be um, transferred to this property. So it gives this a little, it squares off this lot a little bit um, better for 23. So this line will disappear because they'll acquire this tiny little bit, which is 453 square feet um, from number 27. So it's just changing the lot boundary, sort of expanding it for 23 and shrinking it a little bit from 27.
Keeps the gravel drive on 23's property.
Yeah, and that's all going away actually, because this is all gonna be redeveloped for a single, two units.
I move we endorse the A and R.
A second.
Votions been made and seconded to endorse the A and R on Hooker Avenue. Any comments, discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. Um, I'll start this time with David.
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
And Sam?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
And George votes yes. Okay, unanimous. The A and Rs are completed.
Woo! Um, that's all I have on the agenda. Um, we do have a scheduled joint public hearing with the Legislative Matters Subcommittee um, regarding uh, map change to 40R on Bridge Road for August 8th. So I'll send that out next week, um, once I get the Zoom information from the council clerk.
What, what are you, are you gonna send some information about it? Like, so we can have some background or?
No.
We're just showing up.
Yeah, yeah, I'll send you the zoning ordinance amendments that got referred out from the council and the agenda.
Okay.
Um, but it's a expansion of um, uh, the state's um, incentive zoning for creating housing, um, and particular affordable housing.
And I see, speaking of state expanding things, I see that the state is allowing us to continue to have Zoom meetings, but urging us to do them hybrid. So for the foreseeable future, we're gonna certainly have our August meeting by Zoom.
Board voted on in June, I wanna say, that the summer meetings would be hybrid and then we, I mean, would be on Zoom. And then in September, we'd see how um, the pandemic is going and go back to in-person possibly.
So we'll discuss that on the August 25th Zoom meeting. Figure out what we're doing in September.
Um, I may send out, um, I will have to do public hearing notices for the September meeting. Um, and I'd likely go ahead and put it as.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
A storm has reached Carolyn's house.
To in-person, you know, in terms of changing the notice.
Great.
Okay.
And Carolyn, we're, we're shorthanded these days. Do you know, does the mayor need to be, get a few phone calls to the planning board members urging her to nominate another board member so we're not? In this.
Well, I, it may be a case of not having candidates. So if you all know people that would be.
I, I have a, I have a good candidate who wants to do it.
Okay, have them fill out the application in the mayor, at the mayor's um, page.
Okay.
Um, because, you know, we're down three now? Yes, we're down three.
Okay.
And Sam, have him or her also talk to their city counselor, just so they're aware of it and can kind of help groom that process a little bit, you know?
Okay.
That would be great.
And then, um, uh, not to be a pain in the butt, but I can read through the minutes. Um, can you help me, uh, Carolyn, just help me find the minutes for that NEDA discussion so I can remind myself what I'm misremembering or remembering?
Um, how about, I, yes, I can send you the link um, to the decision and then a copy of the minutes. Does that work?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I mean, how would I, how would I even begin to know what?
It was, it was, right, right. Hey, um, one little piece of trivia for you historians out there. This property we looked at on uh, Damon Road, the Volvo dealership, right in the corner underneath the railroad tracks, there's a little, a big covert with a sweat, with a, a dried-up stream running to it. That's the remnants, about one of the few places where you could see the old North African canal that you've all heard a lot about. So if anybody wants to go spelunking there and look at the canal, it kind, then it disappears under King Street forever. And go any other way, it disappears under 91, but it's kind of interesting to see it. All right, well, thank you, Carolyn. Good seeing you.
All right.
Have a good rest of your July.
Do we need to, do we, sorry, do we need to vote to adjourn? Do we not do that?
You're right.
I, I move we adjourn.
Do it, do it.
All right, the motions were made and, and someone seconded that, seconded by Sam, adjournment at 8:06.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Jenna?
Yes.
And Sam?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
And George? Yes, okay.